Okay, if we can get everyone to take their seats, we can get started. So if, uh, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, April 23rd, 2018. If everyone would please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a silent prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alderman Bernelli.
Here.
Alderwoman Cavallo. Alderwoman Cato.
Here.
Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Giacome.
Here.
Alderman Hadley.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Here.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Napoli.
Here.
Alderman Nujaim.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Perneruski.
Here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you, and just for the record, Alderman Cavallo continues to recuperate from her surgery, and Alderman DiGiovin Carlo is traveling out of state today. So with that, the first item on the agenda would be public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board, please sign up with the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record when you begin to speak. There's a five-minute limit, and I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff, if you'd call the first speaker.
First speaker from 62 Avalon Circle, Richard Wood. Richard Wood, Avalon Circle, Waterbury. And, uh, we have a lot to talk about tonight, so I'm gonna try to be brief, because I know Larry DePillo's got some exciting information about how backwards the city is run sometimes. We have a water department that was selling water below cost, and yet we get a bill to pay the water at our cost. Why? Well, don't ask the guy who runs it, because he wouldn't know either. The thing is also, we have some problems with our waste department. With the sludge that is trucked through the area, you're gonna find some of it has high content of mercury, arsenic, cyanide, and I don't remember the last time I saw a report on testing of employees that work in that division. Two have died, from what I can find out. We don't know for sure if it was because of arsenic poisoning, or cyanide, or whatever, but there is a high level of pollution in the work area. Now, I understand there are reports of tests done in the work area, but no one seems to know where they are. I would just ask some of you guys, if you could find out, let me know, so I could read them and see what we have to work with, or if they refuse to republish them, give us a good reason why. Now, also, on the Human Rights Commission side, Martin is gonna give you a rundown on that, but we are noticing more callers coming in, at least to me, about items that are not within our purview. But I take the calls because they're voters, and they simply want someone to listen to them. Most of the time, it does not fit in the human rights arena at all, but they wanna know who they can call. So I generally, when I see them here, I give them a list of numbers of the various situations that might answer their problems, whether it might could be a property dispute, it could be a job-related problem, who knows? It covers the entire spectrum of life. And they, when they do call, I try to give them the benefit of the doubt and tell them what I think they could do, and the phone number of the individuals or the agency that will give them assistance. The one thing people want is someone to listen to them, and that is a critical arena and section of your department. They call you, they expect some answers. You can't always give them an answer, that's understandable. You're not all as perfect as your spouses say you are, but in the meantime, we do have to answer some of the problems that we're having in the city, and mainly that's in the homeless population. I think we're gonna have to take a good look at the shelter and expand it. Maybe the money we make in the water department can be used for that purpose. Why in God's name are we selling water below our cost? Doesn't even make sense. Watertown's paying one price, I'm paying a higher price. Why? I don't live in Watertown, I live in Waterbury. Like, give me, next time I go to pay my bill, I'm gonna deduct the cost. If it's $10, I'll pay $10 less. If the city doesn't like it, they can come chase me down the street. But we have to do something about the equality of that, otherwise we're gonna end up looking like a bunch of fools. Why should the people in Watertown pay less for a product or service, and the people, the residents and taxpayers of Waterbury, pay more? It just defies the imagination. And there's a few other situations like that. For one thing, the staff in the water and sewer department needs higher-quality testing.
One minute, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, I should call you. I talked to a couple of doctors at Waterbury Hospital, I seem to be visiting there with clients, and they said evidently the test for, say, cyanide, lead, mercury, arsenic, means to fall into a different group of tests, and also falls into workman's compensation. So they prefer not to do it without calling the city and saying, "Well, do you approve this?", or whatever. Meantime, we don't know if you have it, if you have any problems with that. And not knowing is fatal. Just look at the incident rates at the hospitals for this type of thing. That's it for tonight, Martin's coming up next, he'll give you some background on some things that you might wanna know about. Thank you very much, peace be with you. Next speaker from 130 Beth Lane, Richard Etteek.
Richard Etteek, 130 Beth Lane. Um, I have to apologize, because I have an appointment with a broken muffler, so when I'm done, I'm gonna run, no disrespect. There's been much outcry from families and the current ABA program therapists who deal with our autistic children in the Waterbury's school system. Um, there's been a lot of outcry over the Waterbury's goal to outsource their positions. And the outcry's been in these chambers, you've been hearing it, as well as before the Board of Education. I am a parent of a child with autism, enrolled in the school system. It appears that we're moving full speed ahead to replace the current ABA program, the BT therapists, even though we don't have an approved budget by the Alderman yet. Six days ago, here's the job applicant, they're looking forward to replace these positions right here. And what I found interesting in it is, most of the cry you've heard is that these folks, the RBTs, aren't gonna have enough experience. Well, it does say here, for requirements, bachelor's degree from an accredited post-secondary institution in a related field of study and training. Well, let me just remind you, that the BTs we have is a different category altogether, and they can do more, and they have bachelors, and most of them have masters, and they've been here for 14 years building that program. The deputy superintendent, Mr. Henry, indic-, oh, let me just say this. A comment came to us from an unnamed BT. You know what they said? They don't want us to see, they didn't want us to know about this. Now, my understanding was an RFP was supposed to require that they have the ability to reapply for their positions, yet they did not know about this. Deputy Superintendent Mr. Henry indicated in his transitional acceptance letter back in October 2017, three goals to be established. The first goal being, and I quote, "Ensuring stability, continuity, and a path toward progress in all aspects of the district's programs and operations through focused leadership." With all due respect, it appears that a focus of leadership has been skewed toward the autism program, because if the city moves forward to outsource their, these positions, I believe we'll unravel and dismantle 14 years of achieved stability, return to a lack of continuity, because they tried outsourcing years ago, and it didn't work apparently, and trample over a path of progress so ritually achieved by the existing team of ABA therapists. Let's look at the budget and the reason why they wanna do this. The 2019 budget, as spelled out in Mr. Mayor's PowerPoint on my Waterbury website, indicates approximately $158 million allocated from the general fund of the city budget. That's 56 percent, more than half of our city's budget goes to education. Add to that another $20 million from the Connecticut Alliance Grant, and then another $2.3 million they expect also from the Alliance Grant, which does not go through these chambers. $500,000 is what they wanna save to outsource these positions, out of $180 million budget. The percentage is .277 percent. I brought that home to see what that looked like. .277 percent of an average $65,000 income, $180.50. That's discretionary spending. I could blow down an eBay or Amazon tonight, in fact, I just did on a muffler. Something doesn't make sense. A chief argument to move forward with this plan, which I read in the newspaper about a week or more ago, was due to high absenteeism among the ranks of the BTs. I'm here to defend the therapist, however, I also work in management. If there's a problem with absenteeism, HR. We have disciplinary policies. Deal with, use disciplinary policies and take care of those positions, that problem will go away. We have to cut $500,000 of disciplinary spending to get rid of a whole program? That argument doesn't make sense to me.
One minute, sir.
Thank you. I'll end with this. There's been public outcry in these very chambers by a Board of Education member over dissonance among the committee, the Board of Education Committee, with the way this very significant portion of the city budget is handled. And most discerning was the lack of transparency among their ranks when making decisions on that budget. And on that subject of lack of transparency, it might interest you to know, the Board of Education, they don't provide records of meetings, schedules, or minutes on the Waterbury website, yet the Board of Aldermen, the section's overflowing with public records. If I gave you guys an eBay score, AAA++ for the Board of Aldermen. All the information's there. Board of Education, there's nothing there, so we don't know what's going on half the time. And there are those among your ranks who've been a little upset, and just as we are, this is information that's been filtering out little by little, and nobody knows what's going on. I'm gonna, I only got 14 seconds. Please, when this budget comes across to you, please reject this budget and ask the Board of Education to clearly state their intentions and reasons why they wanna really outsource these positions for the mere cost of a cup of coffee. Thank you.
Next speaker from 11 Steuben Street, Lawrence V. DePillo.
Good evening, Lawrence DePillo from 11 Steuben Street. The Watertown contract for water and sewer was a five-year contract that was enacted July 1st of 2013. It expires June 30th, 2018, two months from now. Watertown pays 70 and a half cents per 100 cubic feet of sewers discharged into our waste treatment system. Watertown was to pay a 2% per year increase, which if enacted would make it just under 75 cents per 100 cubic feet. Waterbury residents currently pay $2.30 per 100 cubic feet for what we discharge into our waste treatment system. We own the system, Watertown pays 75 cents, we pay $2.30 per 100 cubic feet. Apples and apples, not oranges, folks, cubic feet, 100 cubic feet, 100 cubic feet. This budget year, are proposing a 5.4% increase to us residents, making our $2.42 up to, um, let's see, $2.42 per year, while Watertown is paying us 75 cents. Bad deal for Waterbury. To make matters worse, our capital recovery charge that we've been paying for more than 22 years for our sewer upgrade, uh, you're proposing to charge residents $3.93, $3.95.3 cents per 100 cubic feet. For Watertown discharge, they're only paying a fraction of a dollar. So we're paying $3.953 from your budget, they're paying less than a dollar. That make sense to you? And now the Watertown contract's expiring in two months, and we have an addendum before you tonight, your item number seven, to extend the sewer use to Middlebury user at Watertown rates. Your item number eight is to extend water use to the Middlebury user at Watertown rates, and you guessed it, another bargain. Based on our July 1st, 2013 contract, Watertown pays Waterbury $1.12 per 100 cubic feet of water. Watertown, if they pay their 2% per year increase, would be at $1.21 per 100 cubic feet of water. Waterbury residents currently pay $2.52 per 100 cubic feet for our water that we use from our reservoirs. We own it, and the only thing we do for our Waterbury businesses is if they have a larger pipe than 3/4 inch going to their businesses, we even charge them more. We charge Watertown a flat rate no matter what. You wanna talk about making our businesses not competitive? If you remember, a few weeks ago, at our budget public hearing, I went to great lengths to point out the diminishing returns from the users outside Waterbury. Yes, the losses in revenue from Watertown jump off the page. I propose tonight that you place items seven and eight on hold, pending a review of this year's budget, and the Watertown water and sewer contracts that are to expire in two months, June 30th to 2018. Has anybody come to this board at all to talk about those contracts that expire in two months? Has anybody told you about them paying 75 cents to what we're paying, or paying $1.12 to our $2.52? Has anybody talked about what we're paying in capital recovery charges versus what Watertown pays in a capital recovery charge? We are getting worked over horribly.
One minute.
Our residents, our businesses, they're non-competitive, and what are we doing? We're saying, "Well, to Watertown, take in some businesses now from Middlebury, and we'll even give you more at half, or even more than half, discount from what the Waterbury residents and businesses are paying." Do you understand now why those businesses are all on straight turnpike in Middlebury, and in Watertown, and not in Waterbury? They laugh at us. They've been laughing at us for years, and this five-year contract was a laugh, and now that it's up, nobody's even come before this board. So the question that really needs to be answered, is this administration working on behalf of the Waterbury ratepayers, us and our businesses, or they working on behalf of the out-of-town ratepayers? Like Watertown, and now looks like Middlebury as well? I can't do much regarding this, I'm standing on this side of the podium.
That's time, Mr. DePillo.
Thank you. You're on that side of the podium. I ask on behalf of the taxpayers, you take this seriously, and do something. Thank you.
Next speaker from 22 Buckland Drive, Joanna Cass.
Joanna Cass, 22 Buckland Drive. Good evening, Aldermen, Alderwomen, and affected officials. Can you guys hear me okay?
Uh-huh.
Okay, it sounds weird. Sorry. Um, oh, hold on, it's my first time doing this. I lost a page. I'm speaking on, um, myself, and then I'm also a friend of the library, the Salsbrunson Library. I'm speaking on the proposed budget cuts that we have in the library. Waterbury has one of the most underfunded library systems in the entire state for decades, and the system, and the situation is getting worse. Studies have shown that well-funded library systems are economic generators, they enhance the quality of life for a city's residents, and increase the ability of a city to attract new residents and businesses. Access to public libraries increases students' test scores, reduces unemployment and homelessness, generates new business growth, builds community, and supports lifelong learning. The Salsbrunson Library provides vital services for our community. The library circulates more than 145,000 books, movies, and music, and is visited more than 243,000 times each year. The library offers free educational programs for all ages, as well as cultural programs that enrich the quality of life in Waterbury. Sorry, this is weird. The library offers free computer and internet access, which is so important in a city where as much as 30% of the households do not have access to the internet. The library helps people find jobs and connects them to free resources and mentors if they wanna start their own business. The library offers free computer classes in person and online tutorials for vital job skills. The library is a safe haven for teenagers and young adults. The library gives students a quiet place to do their homework. The librarians help students with their homework and help everyone find the information they need. The library is also a community gathering place, where people with common interests can meet new friends. The library has a chess club, several book clubs for all ages, an anime club, and a gaming club. The library is very responsive to requests from the public. The staff do their best to provide the services that the people want. Studies have shown the public libraries improve the property values for the neighborhoods they are in. They improve the quality of life for children and seniors, especially when they live in walking distance of a public library. Public libraries are also economic generators, offering skills training for the workplace and mentoring for business startups. Reducing funding to the Salsbrunson Library will cause harm to Waterbury's residents. Increasing funding to the library will help increase quality of life, literacy rates, and economic vitality for all of Waterbury. Providing full funding to the Salsbrunson Library will benefit everyone. Again, the, um, budget, the library budget, I don't think it's been increased in, as I said, it's, it's, Waterbury's been one of the most underfunded library systems in the entire state for decades. I think less than one percentage point of our budget goes to the library, that's not that much money. I work at the Wiltwick Library, we don't have that much money there, but for, in ratio for what Waterbury gets, we don't get anything. I read books, I'm sure Steve reads books, Mr. Napoli, or, excuse me, Ron reads books. We're not just books in the library. People of all socioeconomic levels love to save money, anybody. So you go, you borrow a book instead of buying a book, it's like, it's, it just makes sense, guys. I don't know what else to say. Um, just please, um, keep it in mind when you're going over the budget, that don't fund, don't cut the library budget.
Next speaker from 96 Downstreet, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 96 Downstreet. Um, before I come up here to talk to what I wanna talk about, I just wanted to say I'm very happy to see that the mayor's gonna be appointing Saleem Nujaim on the Finance and Order Commission. I, you guys know he was a state rep for a long time, and he had a horrible accident incident there, and I wish him and his family well. I know Saleem since the kids were little, and he was always good and kind, and always came to a lot of our fundraisers and Waterville Community Club, and he also participated with a lot of veteran events. He was always there all the time for us veterans, whether it be at Fort Hill, and you know, you seen him, Mike, and I know a lot of you guys seen him. I mean, where didn't you see Saleem? You know, he was all over the place. But anyways, I, I hope, and that you guys, you know, consider very strongly to appoint Saleem to this position, because I think it's well worth it. Okay, I just wanna let everybody know, to people that don't know me, my name is Martin Spring, I'm chairman of the Human Rights Commission, I'd like to have my vice chair come up here with me if he can. And, uh, we, uh, I just wanna give an update, a quarterly report, 'cause you know Reverend Mallory, God rest his soul, he used to give a quarterly report, and they used to come up with him, and I guess he passed away over late, at least over a year ago. We had several special guests come before our board, and they were Linda Webby from the Corporation Council, Waterbury Fire Department Chief Dave Martin, director of the State Human Rights Commission, Donna Wilkinson and staff, Waterbury Police Department Chief Vernon Riddick Jr. came, and Mr. James Monroe from the NAACP, and Director of Operations, Mr. Joe Gary, I know he came before our board too. And, uh, you know, we had a lot of good people come in and talking to us about things that they feel, oh, that should be important, should be addressed before the Human Rights Commission. Recently, as you know, Mr. Wood, we had a Board of Education members, Ann Sweeney and Karen E. Harvey, giving us an update pertaining to new bullying policies, procedures that must be followed by all school districts within the city of Waterbury. Plus, we now have a public speaking set aside on our agenda, which we probably haven't had in a long time, and I have to thank Mr. Wood, because he said, "How come we don't have public speaking?" And I didn't know, even know if it was allowed, because we never really had anybody from the public to speak to the Human Rights Commission. But now, as you know Brenda, and I wanna mention Brenda, 'cause she was, she's on our board, and I wanna mention Mr. Greg Hadley, he was on the board, and he knows that we didn't have that many people come to speak, for whatever reason, but, you know, right now, we do have enough people coming in to speak, and I'm really happy and delighted about that. And, uh, you know, we have a lot of good commissioners on the board, who are dedicated commissioners, who are volunteers, none of us get paid, nor do we wanna get paid, but we're there for the people, and we have good, honest people, and have come out with a lot of good ideas. And, uh, so, also, I wanna know, we were all hoping that this entire Board of Aldermen, I know the budget's gonna be coming up for fiscal 2018 and 2019, we're still looking for a part-time investigator. Um, you know, again, Reverend Mallory was fighting for this at least over 20 years ago, and we're talking about maybe five, six different administrations, and including this administration, that nothing ever happened. And some members of the Board of Aldermen questioned that, and they say, "Well, what do you guys do? Why should we have a part-time investigator when there's really nothing there, you know, worth looking into?" Well, there's a lot looking into. I mean, you're not, if you have a door sign that says "closed", "We are not interested in talking to anybody", people aren't gonna come, but if you have a door that says "open to the public", "We wanna hear what you have to say". We're not looking for that much money, I mean, I'm not looking for a job, he's not looking for a job. I have a job, I'm happy where I am, but I, I would have to talk about this later on when you have your, you know, your budgetary meeting coming up for the last public Karen.
One minute, Mr. Spring.
I wouldn't, I didn't think I went that far right now. Anyways, I, I was hoping that you guys could, find it in your hearts, this is what I wrote, to have something here for us, fighting for the public, for the citizens of Waterbury, because, um, you know, people deserve it, and they're looking for a lot of good, positive things to happen. You think about this, 20 years, 20 years we've been looking to get a part-time investigator, that is unheard of. I mean, if I had the money myself, I would hire somebody. I just think it's important, because even when we went before the State Human Rights Commission, as you know, that they even said, "Why don't you have, you know, somebody in that capacity, a part-time investigator?". I mean, it seems to me that we have money for everything else, but something that we really need, that is vitally important for the seat at Waterbury, you know, that we don't have. And, and again, Mr. Hadley, God bless you, sir, you were on our board for a long time, and you know Reverend Mallory, we've been fighting for that, and we've been fighting for that, and I know Brenda, I'm so happy that she's part of our board, that she's been fighting for that also. Thank you.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I wanted to come here tonight, um, I was very happy with some of the articles in the paper about the Howland Hughes, um, development, and, um, you know, overall, most of the public is very happy. There should be 400 people, possibly getting up to 600 people in downtown Waterbury. It's a game changer for this city, and we're, I think we're heading in some very good, um, down the road for this city. Uh, I would like to say that even though we live in a society of people that have freedom of speech, some of the comments out there, obviously we know that they're from the same individuals that don't wanna see anything good happen in the city of Waterbury, and, um, are, are, they're running scared right now. They're very scared, because, you know, Waterbury is moving in a very good direction. Waterbury is, as they used to call it, up on Waterbury. I like to call it now, Waterbury's back. And, um, you know, it was said by one of the speakers that out-of-town laughs at us. Well, out-of-town residents have been laughing at us for many years, because we haven't had an administration like this that has done everything it can to bring business into the city of Waterbury, bring development into the city of Waterbury. The previous administration used to say that downtown's dead, we can't do anything down there in downtown. Uh, in my own opinion, I think that that was because of, um, their own investments outside of the city of Waterbury, and they were so busy trying to take everything out of Waterbury and move it to their developments. But quite frankly, we are moving in the right direction, and I, you know, I remember my grandfather talking about the Depression, and how the city of Waterbury built up, and my grandfather talking about the Depression, and how the city of Waterbury built up and, you know, was known for their brass roots. And I like to say that I'm proud to be living in a generation now that we are going to see good come back in the city of Waterbury, and we're going to be handing something off to our future children in the city of Waterbury, so that they wouldn't have to live where we've been living with, for decades, trying to figure out what we're going to do now in the city of Waterbury. But, you know, Waterbury's been on the map for quite a while. Tonight, sadly, it's being reported on the news tonight, you know, President Bush was a high dignitary that came to the city of Waterbury. I'm praying for him tonight. It's been reported that he's in intensive care, critical condition. You know, we have had some pretty big dignitaries come to the city of Waterbury. They came here because they saw things happening here in Waterbury. That's something to be said. You know, there's so many people that like to go around and say, "Waterbury's dead," you know, and, oh, they hear things from outside the city of Waterbury, that Waterbury's going nowhere. Well, I got to tell you, in about three or four years, you're going to hear some of those same voices, but they're, they're going to be coming on the train that's coming down, downtown, and everywhere else in this city, and they're going to act like they've been there from the get-go. But as proud Waterbury citizens, we'll take them on, and we'll bring them on that train, because it takes all of us to continue to bring this city back.
One minute, Mr. Pelletier.
And I would just hope that this board and every other board continues to work with the development in downtown, continues to do what it has to do to get development here. And I want to commend this mayor and his administration. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker.
Thank you. With that, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of minutes for the first budget public hearing of Monday, April 4th, 2018, and...
Mr. President, motion approved the minutes for the first budget public hearing held on Monday, April 4th, 2018, and the regular meeting of Monday, April 9th, 2018. So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Napoli, is there any, are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes, the minutes are approved. With that, before we recess into committees, we do have one item, which is item number four. You should have gotten that, it was not in the original package, it should have been delivered to you last week, which is the collective bargaining agreement between the city and the firefighters' union. So unless there's an objection, we'll take that up as a committee of the whole, and we'll do that first.
So moved.
Any objections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we'll then entertain a motion to recess in the committee of the whole to take up new business item number four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're now as a committee of the whole. And with that, who's going to come up and do the presentation? Tom and Connor? Also, the mayor wanted me to let you know that he is at Wham's this evening. He wanted to be here, but he's at Wham's this evening because there's a presentation his daughter Maggie is doing at the school, so he's there for that presentation this evening. Otherwise, he'd be here. You're going to go, Mike?
Good evening. Just for a quick overview, the city, through its Labor Council, has successfully negotiated the contract that is before you this evening with, with the IAF, IAFF Local 1339, our firefighters' union. It's a, a process that has been going on for a good period of time. The last contract expired in June of 2017. There is an executive summary that's been provided to you, and Tom Parasot with C.E.S. Core, Cassidy, and McPartlin is here this evening to walk you through that. Myself and Dave Martin are here to answer any follow-up questions that you may have in relation to the negotiated agreement and the terms and conditions that are outlined.
Good evening, Board. I'll walk you quickly through what's capsulized in the executive summary. As Mr. LeBlanc said, it's been a protracted process that began last spring. We actually hit an impasse as we moved along, and the arbitration process began. But as the arbitration process proceeded, we were able to put things together and reach an agreed-upon collective bargaining agreement. The agreement is fairly simple. There are no pension improvements or changes. There is no additional leave time. The agreement focuses on the economic issues capsulized with health insurance and the general wage increases. The union came to the city early on in the process and said that they were interested in leaving the city's health plan for a firefighters-only health plan that they were aware of, that is supported by the International Association of Firefighters. And the name of the plan is the Northwest Firefighters Trust. And frankly, we weren't that familiar with it. The city's insurance consultant, One Digital, did its due diligence with respect to the plan, found it was a viable alternative, found that it was a less expensive alternative, and that became largely the centerpiece of how we were able to get an agreed-upon settlement here. So the key provision here has the union moving its health insurance coverage for all active employees and their dependents to the Northwest Firefighters Trust plan. The first year of the contract is behind us, essentially, so there's no change in that year. But for years two, three, and four of the agreement, they would be in the new program. Our savings are calculated by the city's insurance consultant to be $145,946 in year two, which will begin July 1st, 2018. The same savings are projected for the year three of the collective bargaining agreement, and the savings for year four increased to $182,000. With respect to the general wage increases, we have negotiated a four-year package with a wage freeze in year one. So there is no wage increase for fiscal year July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. There are no other reported wage freezes in the state of Connecticut through the Connecticut Conference of Municipality Collective Bargaining Agreement reporting system covering that period of time. Waterbury and its firefighters will have the only wage freeze for that period of time. Year two of the agreement has a general wage increase of 2.25%. Year three, 2.75%. Year four, 2.75%. When we look at what the net cost is, taking the wage increases and netting out the insurance savings that will accrue through the plan change, we see that over the four-year period of time, the total budgetary impact is 5.4% over the current cost of the contract. There are some small changes that were non-economic that were also agreed to with respect to union business leave. No firefighter will be able to use union business leave available under the contract if they are being paid to work for another union organization at the same time that they're taking their Waterbury leave. With respect to sick leave, there is what's called the free list within the department, which is a mechanism by which firefighters can donate time to ill or disabled firefighters who run out of time. The sick leave donations will be allowed to come from vacation time banks now. And lastly, there was an agreement reached with respect to the uniform and protective clothing that will be issued to probationary members as they come onto the department. But there are no fiscal impacts anticipated for many of those. The fiscal impacts all really relate to the health insurance change and the general wage increase. There any questions? We're here to answer.
Any questions? Alderman Napoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all for being here. I'm just wondering, was there any major concerns or changes, I'm sorry, was there any major changes in some of the working conditions?
No, sir.
Okay. And then Chief, you could probably answer this question best for me. In your opinion, do you think this is a fair contract for the taxpayers and our firefighters?
I think it's one of the unique times, you know, if you, you listen to a lot of old adages, they say the good deal is the one where both people walk away unhappy. I think this is one of the few times that both sides can walk away happy. I think it's a great deal for the firefighters. I think it's a great deal for the city. I think they divest themselves from a group of people insurance-wise, and the potential exposure with that, it produces the savings, and they've pretty much self-funded a great deal of their raises. So it's kind of the perfect storm. I think it's probably one of the best deals, and I've seen maybe the best deal in the 30 years I've been on the fire department.
Good to hear. Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further questions? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This question is going to be more directed towards Michael Blank, I believe. Were we able to realize the expected savings on the HSA plan? And is this part of why we're looking at this, moving to another medical plan?
It's certainly my belief that we are realizing savings with the high deductible health plan with the HSA arrangement. It's the type of plan structure that takes time to develop from a membership utilization standpoint, where it starts to pay dividends. And certainly, I always have to condition my comments from the standpoint that when you exclude out large claim experience, the evidence that's been reported to us suggests absolutely that we are generating savings through the high deductible health plan program, with members becoming more aware of their health and utilization of the services that are available within the program, because under the high deductible arrangement, it's their dollars that are upfront first from a cost standpoint. That said, that was not a driving reason, driving reason to consider this trust. This private trust, Firefighters Trust, was brought to the table from a proposal standpoint by the union. The trust, the plan that these firefighters would be moving into, is also a high deductible health plan arrangement. It's very similar to the city's plan. What drew interest from our side was the realization that when you look at the premium equivalent costs of the trust plan versus the city's plan, there are, there is an opportunity for savings to be realized. That's been projected out throughout the life of this contract. We have put some protections in place to address any increases in the cost of the trust that may come about throughout the course of the contract. But the fact of the matter is, as we stand right now, the, the cost of the trust plan on a premium equivalent basis is cheaper than our plan on a premium equivalent basis. How can that be? The argument, the only argument I can think of to support that is that the experience of firefighters and the way they manage a trust that is exclusive to only members who are firefighters, in that equation somehow or another, at least at this point in time, is generating a lower-cost structure for health benefits.
We're confident that this provider is well-vetted, and there won't be any issues with, with any insolvency or anything like that would this ensure?
The, the vetting, if you will, of this trust that was vested with the, the union to go through that process, they are confident from a provider standpoint that the trust is, is solid. I think going forward, we have protections that have, language, protective language that's been built into the contrast, into the contract, where for argument's sake, or hypothetical, under a hypothetical scenario, if the trust went bankrupt and was no longer covering those members, we would absolutely have to be in a, as the sponsor of the benefit program, have to step in. And there are provisions within the contract where our interests, the city's interests from a cost standpoint, would be protected in that scenario. But certainly, we're, I think our outlook and the union's outlook is that this is a very viable option, one that, you know, certainly they believe will be successful, and to that extent, if it generates the savings that are projected, that's a win for both sides. As some of you may be familiar, when you do the, the deep dive into the healthcare benefit programs these days, it's not only a cost to the employer, it's a cost to the employees, a significant cost that they have to share a responsibility for. So to the extent that there's opportunity for savings, it's a win-win.
Will they still have the ability to utilize the HSA with this plan?
Yes, there will be an HSA established either through the trust or, or through the city's arrangement. That is one piece that is still being worked out as we speak. Anticipating if the contract is approved, we've got essentially a 60-day window to go through the process of enrollment and finalizing all the details, because the effective date for transition is expected to be July 1.
And they'll be, are they going to roll over into the new HSA? Or are they going to keep their current funds in their current HSA? I'm not sure if it's, if it would be the same bank that's managing the HSA.
Right, to that point, that's one of the, the details that hasn't been ironed out. In the event that it's a separate bank, I do believe there are provisions. It is, the money that's in those accounts is the employees', and to the extent that they can transfer into a, a new HSA account, I believe there's mechanisms that would allow for that.
I know we, not too long ago, finally ratified their, the last contract with the firefighters. Do you have an average of what the wage increase was across that last contract?
Across the contract that emanated from the arbitration that ended last spring, it was 7% over the preceding three years.
Okay. During our caucus's discussions, we found it really encouraging that the union brought this forward to the city. I just thought I'd share that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, do all of the firefighters have to go over? Is it, is it, it's not an option, they'll all transfer over at this point?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Giacomo?
Thank you. Gentlemen, I'm not sure, it may be perhaps representative from the union, but I really was just curious, following along with Alderman Sherman, to know more about this, this Northwest Firefighters Trust plan. I tried to look it up online, I didn't find a whole lot. Just a little bit about it, and are there any other associations in Connecticut? Or are we sort of setting, you know, I don't know if groundbreaking is the right word, but, you know, I found obviously Washington State, I think I saw like Fairbanks, Alaska or something like that, so that fits with Northwest. And I was just curious about, you know, the plan, and if this is something that's sort of picking up new associations and new memberships, you know, if it's a growing plan, and to learn more about it.
Yeah, there are union members here who can give you great detail with respect to the plan. I don't know if President Schultz or Mr. Kennedy want to address it, but quickly, there are Connecticut municipalities already in it.
Okay.
They're the smaller municipalities. I think President Schultz will tell you that a number of the other bigger municipalities are looking to go toward it.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm John Schultz, and the president of Waterbury Firefighters Local 1339. To address the first part of your question, anyway, the, the trust that we're immediately entering into is in Connecticut, and you certainly can't sell insurance across state lines. So we've established a trust here in order to handle the, the funding and the background within Connecticut itself. However, we are a member of the Northwest Firefighters Trust, which is out of District 7 of the International, which is the northwest corner of the country. We also have, through that trust, a membership in Alaska and Hawaii. There are similar trusts throughout the country. Clark County, Nevada, for example, is a big one. Houston's another, that have been doing this kind of work for a long time. We use Clark County, Nevada, often because they're on a large scale. In fact, they recently finished construction on a five-story medical arts building, and they've housed all their doctors for their trust within one building, and they have a one-stop shopping for their membership. Our model has started as a Connecticut-only device, and when we were in communication with other parts of the country, we were invited to look closer at the Northwest Firefighters Trust, and then invited certainly to... look closer at the Northwest Firefighters Trust and then invited certainly to join in. We've been very comfortable with the results with some of the other locals that have been in. They've been very responsive. From our standpoint, it's by firefighters, for firefighters. It's our employees answering the phone at the call center. Our firefighter members on the board make the decisions on funding the trust and the benefits that are available through the trust. To answer an earlier question, the firefighters tend to be a healthier part of the population, more health-conscious, more apt to work out. Certainly with cancer being another, high awareness within our group, it's become more of a focus. And that's part of the experience that reduces the cost to insure those members. Does that kind of encompass what you're looking for?
Yeah, and, and I think you mentioned it as well, Attorney Paris, so I'd mention that we, there are other municipalities or other associations in Connecticut that are currently part of this trust. And you said some of the other larger municipalities are also exploring this option as well?
A lot of it has to do with the cycle of their contract renewals. We've been working on this project for over a year, to give you an idea of how long it takes to come to fruition.
Yeah, I think, you know, and I could be wrong, but just from the little that I found, it looks like this relatively, the Northwest Firefighters Trust was a relatively new entity, I think 2013 I saw, or I could have been wrong about that.
January 1st, 13 is when they went into business and opened the doors officially, yes.
Okay.
They've taken on some other state entities lately. The Illinois, rather, firefighters, the State Firefighters Association, joined earlier this year. So there are an increasing number of agencies that are considering it. It's largely cost-driven. And if it costs the city less, it costs the member less. We pay a proportionate share. So it's good for both parties.
Yeah. No, and I think as Chief Martin said earlier, we've seen a lot of arbitration, we've seen a lot of contentious, well, you've seen, I'm sure firsthand, a lot of contentious negotiations over the years. And as Alderman Sherman remarked before, you know, I think we liked particularly that it was the, the local that came forward with this idea. You know, quite oftentimes, certain people may view a bargaining unit as just trying to grab whatever it can grab, but this, I think, showed to us a true collaboration of, you know, here's something that we're bringing forward that's going to save money. And the city obviously is desirous of that these days. So I want to commend all of you for that. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you. We've tried to be innovative. We brought the HSA initially to the city as well. We're conscious that the costs directly affect our members as well as the city.
Thank you.
Further questions? Hearing none, then, is there a motion with respect to the collective bargaining, the successor collective bargaining agreement between the City of Waterbury and Local 1339, IAFF, AFL-CIO firefighter unit?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote is to approve the contract and no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The contract is approved. With that, I would entertain a motion that we come out of the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're back into the regular order of business. We'll take this up with the full board as part of the consent calendar. So with that, we will recess into our committees and we'll do both of them out here. There's not a lot of items. Let's start with intergovernmental and then we'll go to finance.
I'd like to call the intergovernmental committee meeting for April 23 to order. First item on our agenda is item number five. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves the appointment of the following individual to the following city board as submitted by Neil M. O'Leary, Mayor of the City of Waterbury, Saleem Nujaim, to the Finance and Audit Review Commission with a term starting today, April 23, 2018, ending in December 31, 2021. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we not disapprove Saleem Nujaim to the Finance Audit Review Commission.
Second.
I have a motion, which has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda, item number six. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves, subject to the Board of Education's approval, at the regular meeting of April 26, 2018. How is that going to work? Of an agreement with Light Tower Fiber Networks, LLC for a five-year period in the not-to-exceed amount of $1,548,000 to provide wide-area telephone and network services for various schools and administrative buildings as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Waterbury Board of Education. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve item six with the correction date amended.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item six, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does Light Tower store all the information and data as well? Or are they just going to maintain the networks?
They're just going to maintain the networks. And they will sign an agreement to comply with the federal law with student privacy.
And then have we used them before?
I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Have we used them before?
No, they're new to us.
Thank you.
Alderman Caro?
Good evening. My understanding that is the city's responsibility to verify the qualifications of that organization. I tried to look them up and on the reviews, they only have one review and it's from an employee. And then when I tried to go into their website, it guided me to another company, or I don't know if it's an extension, it's called Crown Fiber Castle. So what are the qualifications of this company and what other word that you can bring to the table to say, we trust in them, so you can let us know about?
Sure. We went through the regular vetting process with the bidding between Mr. Zuda and Rocco Orso. They met with the bidders, they reviewed their background, and they found them to be the lowest qualified bidder. I don't know where else they work, but we're satisfied that they'll be the ones to provide the upgrade from 1 gigabyte to 10 gigabytes in 24 of our buildings.
So you trust that they are going to do an excellent work?
From the review that was done through the bid process, yes.
And do you have knowledge about this other company, the Crown Fiber Castle, and if they are related?
I do not.
Could you find out about it?
Absolutely. Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The chair will recognize Alderman Sherman.
Thank you very much. In, in the question and answer from the, from Light Tower to the city, they asked if the city was interested in a 20-year fiber IRU or to actually own the fiber. And the reply to that question was, you're welcome to put forward as many proposals as you like. Did they put that proposal together for the city?
To my knowledge, no. They put a three- and a five-year proposal. As part of the package, it shows a breakdown of what they bid on. They bid on a three-year and a five-year 1 gigabyte and a three-year and five-year 10 gigabyte, and that's it.
Okay. So no, none of that information provided. That, that would be interesting to see what the cost would be to the city if the city did in fact own, own the fiber.
It would be, but then we'd also have to worry about upgrades in the future, about what we would have to do to upgrade if fiber goes to something else. But you're correct.
Now, this is simply data, not telco. There's no PRI-type service or anything to do with it.
No, it's just data. It's computers, it's smart boards that we use and printers.
That's a local network, local to that, that particular facility or school?
It's local to education.
This, what I, what we're looking at here is interconnecting all of our schools and 236 is mentioned as the hub.
It is.
That's correct. Okay.
The reason we only have 24 listed here, schools, where we have 30 schools, is it's already been input in six schools already. They upgraded 10 gigabytes.
Same provider, Light Tower?
No, this will be all new Light Tower.
And will there be interoperability between the other six?
Yes.
Was there any communication between the Board of Education and Dan Arapino concerning? I, I have to assume that there was. I would hope that there was. Maybe not.
I'm not aware of any direct communication on that project, but he's usually, they're on the same floor and they talk, usually. But I don't know if he was part of the, the team that reviewed the bids.
I know Dan has done some work in the city, on the city side of things, to avoid having to utilize fiber provided by an outside vendor utilizing wireless bridges between some of the firehouses and what have you. I'm curious if we've looked at any solutions like that.
We did. The issue we have is that we have 19,000 students, we have 3,500 staff on top of 19,000 students. We have smart boards in almost every classroom. Our, our system must run over fiber optics to be, not to be slow, not to slow down. The bandwidth we need is superior, I don't mean that in a quality way, to what the city needs, but we cannot use the Wi-Fi as Dan did. I was here when he made a presentation. Very well done.
We're, we're looking at 10 gigabit. Is that? 10 gigabit is, is available with the air fiber. I've looked at it for where I work. I have to assume that it was looked at, but maybe not?
I don't know. I wasn't part of the origination of the bid. I can find out for you.
I would be disappointed with a $1.5 million price tag if something like that wasn't. And I understand if it, if it was looked at and not found to be a viable solution. Understanding availability, what you're looking for for availability, 99.4%, that may not be reachable with an air fiber solution.
Now, you mentioned the cost. E-Rate will reimburse, in fact, will directly pay 90% of this cost of the contract.
Can you repeat that again, please?
Sure. The Universal Service Administrative Company is an arm of the FCC. And they reimburse schools and libraries to get more universal exposure of high-speed bandwidth. So they use E-Rate. And E-Rate will reimburse, excuse me, I said it twice, wrong, directly pay 90% of the cost of this contract.
Very nice.
So to us, the cost, education, is 30, approximately 30,000 a year for five years.
Very nice. This has nothing to do with their internet connectivity? This is all just interconnectivity between?
Just increasing the bandwidth.
Okay. What, do you know what their current structure is now? What they have?
They have 1 gigabyte.
1 gigabyte fiber. So there's already fiber in place?
I don't know if it's fiber 1 gigabyte. They have 1 gigabyte service right now.
I would be surprised if it wasn't fiber.
Right. But I don't want to say something. I don't know. I apologize.
Okay. So who is our current, did our current provider not provide?
I don't know if they bid.
So?
Right now, I, in fact, I don't know who the current provider is, but I know the people that bid.
Okay.
And I don't believe they are one of the current, we had Digital Backoffice, Light Tower Fiber, Comcast and Frontier. And V&amp;H Photo indicated interest, but they did submit a bid.
And that's our current provider?
I don't know.
Okay. Would, I, I have to assume with another provider coming in that they're going to have to do construction all over again?
They may. But that's included in the cost of the contract.
Understood. Spread out over the, over the term?
Right.
Okay. I don't understand why our current provider wouldn't bid on some, were they approached, you know, or?
We don't approach people according to the city's process. We put an invitation to bid.
Understood. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on item six? I have a motion to approve. Up, Alderman Caro?
I'm just concerned about the fact that I couldn't research the company. And I understand that, that the, the, the people in charge did the, the review of the qualifications, but is the IT department comfortable with this company and the, and the fact that they believe that they may provide a, a service of excellence?
Yes, our IT manager, Mr. Zuda, is 100% behind us.
Any further discussion? Okay, I have a motion to approve item six, which has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item six carries. Our next item on the agenda, item number nine. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves, subject to the Board of Education's acceptance at the regular meeting of April 26, 2018, of a state and federally funded grant contract in the amount of $700 between the Department of Economic and Community Development and Rotella School as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A motion to approve item nine.
I have a motion to approve item nine, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I call the finance committee meeting to order. Agenda item number three. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a employee retirement savings plan, Plan Consulting and Investment Advisory Services Contract, Foodishery Investment Advisors LLC, as submitted by Michael Laplante, Director of Finance.
Motion to approve item number three?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda item number seven. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen amend number one to 2013 Waterbury-Water Town Intermunicipal Sewer Agreement as submitted by Dennis A. Cuevas, P.E., General Manager.
Motion to approve item number seven?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Alderman Giacomo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure either Dennis or, or perhaps our corporation counsel. I'm just a little curious, you know, I know we have agreements with some of these suburban towns. Watertown, obviously, it was spoken about earlier. Wolkett, I think, is another. How often do we, or have we in the past carved out parcels in other adjacent towns? You know, I, I know this location, I drive by it multiple times a day. It's really sort of there, Waterbury, Watertown, Middlebury. So I understand it's not too far, but is this something that we're, we are in the practice of doing with our water agreements? Carving out these little pieces and towns that we don't actually have an agreement with?
I don't know if you call it carving out, but it, in, in this case, it's just because it happens to be that there is a sewer available in the nearest town. And, and that's why- to be that there is a sewer available in the nearest town, and that's why this agreement came about, just servicing this particular parcel.
As I said, I understand the location. Do we do this for anybody else?
No. Any contract or any amendment would come before this board. So thinking back in your most recent history, in my mind, I think the last one was Straw Pond out in Prospect, which was probably more than, more than six years ago.
2002, I believe.
2002 probably was the last one, and I don't recall any since then. So to answer your question, no, it is not a comment.
And how do we usually, or, you know, the sewer department, I mean, is there a sort of vetting process? I mean, can anyone who is maybe closely adjacent to the city's border, who says, well, the city is, you know, 100 yards that way, there's probably a sewer line, let's ask them if we connect? Is there a process or due diligence that the city does where we say, you know, we're sorry, you're in the wrong town, or, okay, you're close enough that we don't have a problem with that, let's go to the Board of Aldermen? How do we decide how this works?
The proximity to the utilities is obviously one decision. Also, we also look to make sure that that area is also serviceable, meaning it is in that town's interest to have that area sewored, because there's also a process where they have to actually come up with what we call sewer service area map, and that map actually indicates which parts of those towns could be sewored. Now, how they get sewored is a matter of, you know, whether it's close proximity to a different town, and that's how we actually came about to the different municipalities that we service, is because it's obviously sewer moves by gravity, so therefore, you look at the closest proximity to a sewer system. We've been approached, you know, in the past by others that we service, like Prospect. That was the last one that comes to mind, that they just recently put a facility close by, so it made it easier for them to actually hook up to the sanitary sewer, and that also, you know, was an amendment that came before this board, and obviously, the board decided to approve. So it's not a vetting process, if you will, it's just sometimes, you know, where the parcel and where the development is occurring, that sometimes it just makes it easier for the connection to...
Okay. I mean, that kind of answers it. I mean, it may be a situation where, if I am understanding you correctly, a business owner or, you know, a resident or somebody, well, would it, does it matter whether it's a residence or business or a development of some kind?
No, we service all commercial, industrial, residential.
So, you know, it's simply a matter maybe of, they approach the city and inquire about it, and we take a look at the map and say, you know, it's, the hookup is right there, it wouldn't be much trouble, you know, this is something we're fine with as long as Watertown's fine with it?
That's, yes. They would have to have an agreement between Watertown and Middlebury for them to actually also, because the sewer will have to go through Watertown and then eventually come to us through the two-meter station, which is the only meter that we have with Watertown.
Right. And this location is a car wash, I believe. Are there any concerns, and, you know, not my area of expertise, about, you know, sort of saying to the public, well, it's a car wash in a town that we don't even have an agreement with, but we're gonna hook them up to Watertown and we're gonna sort of accept that wastewater, if you will, from the car wash into our system? You know, I know next to nothing about car washes other than driving my car through, so is that something that would concern us at all, the sewer department?
No, they will have to follow all state and local regulations regarding the discharge.
Okay. So it's, like I said, it's not something where, you know, a car wash would give us pause or anything like that?
No. They have to follow regulations. There's actually a general permit for car washes that they have to follow, a permit, and they have to also make sure that they test a discharge in order to make sure that they're not discharging something that they shouldn't be in the sewer line.
Okay. No, I think, as I said, it's not something that seems to happen all that often, so I was a little curious about the process and sort of how we weigh it. I mean, it makes logical sense, I guess, you know, if a connection is close enough that we feel it can easily be facilitated, as long as the town that we have the agreement with doesn't mind, then I suppose, you know, as I think about it, I guess it's not a big deal, I suppose.
Well, what I was just gonna add is the neighboring property, they are already hooked up into Waterbury, so they didn't realize this property wasn't part of the agreement already.
Okay.
That's why it's requiring the amendment, because the adjacent property is part of the area that Waterbury services already, so they weren't aware of the fact that it would require the intermunicipal agreement, the amendment. And I believe the next closest, and Dennis could correct me, is they would have to connect to Middlebury all the way down the end by post?
Yeah.
Or all the way across the back fields, across some vacant land where there's none, so it would be cost prohibitive to bring in a line from Middlebury to that location. The lines are already there from Waterbury.
So it makes sense for the property owner to try and pursue this, and then, and when you say adjacent property, you're just thinking about the location and the border. Is the adjacent property in Watertown?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know the line is right there. Okay. And, you know, again, as I said, it's a little bit more curiosity because it's something that's atypical to what we usually see. So I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Alderman Sherman?
Thank you. I think more for Dennis concerning what Alderman Giacomo was mentioning. The discharge from this site, I know phosphorus is one of the byproducts of car washes with the detergents. You mentioned that they're legally obligated to test the water. Is that independent testing, or are they testing that water themselves?
No, that's independent testing, and they also must follow, as I indicated, the general permit that is issued to car washes with certain limits and requirements.
So is that, do they, do they push out phosphorus into the sewer?
They, they may in the soap, as you mentioned, there is phosphorus. And there, to what level and to what extent? I know what they do is they try to recycle water. So they usually, you know, put a recycling equipment inside so that they don't, you know, they don't waste as much water as possible.
In the process of recycling the water, are they pulling out the phosphorus? Do you know?
They're pulling up the soaps, you know, and then also, they have, what they're usually required to do is also put a water-oil separator, so that separates, you know, any oils from, you know, coming from the vehicles that are being washed, and that is also, it's something that needs to be serviced by them, you know, on a periodic basis.
Is that something that someone like Safety Clean has to come in and pump out for them occasionally?
Someone has to pump that out, yep.
Do you know if the phosphorus or other byproducts are similar, where that gets pumped out by a company like that?
I don't know about that, but that water-oil separator would, will capture not only just the oils, but other materials that are discharged, you know, in the car washing process.
Do you currently have contracts in front of you for the municipality of Watertown?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item number eight. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve Amendment Number One to 2013 Waterbury-Water Town Intermunicipal Water Agreement, as submitted by Donald Carver, Superintendent.
Motion to approve item number eight?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Standing Committee. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $29,173.37, submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve, request for refunds.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see that. Yeah, thanks, thanks. Yeah. Yeah, I didn't see that. I gotta hold this because we've got one more, and I don't, I don't see that item. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $11,303.13.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned.
With that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Items one and two are receiving placed on file. Item three is on consent to approve the Employee Retirement Savings Plan Consulting and Investment Advisory Services Contract, fiduciary investment advisors LLC. Item four is on consent to approve the successor collective bargaining agreement between the City of Waterbury and local 1339 IAAF- AFL-CIO firefighter unit. Item number five is on consent not to disapprove the appointment of Saleem G. Nujaim to the Finance and Audit Review Commission for a term commencing April 23 and expiring on February 31, 2021. Item number six is on consent to approve, subject to the Board of Education's approval at their next regular meeting on April 26, an agreement with Light Tower Fiber Networks Two LLC for a five-year period, and the not to exceed amount of $1,548,000 to provide wide-area telephone and network services for various schools and administrative buildings. Item seven is on consent to approve Amendment Number One to 2013 Waterbury-Water Town Intermunicipal Sewer Agreement. Item eight is on consent to approve Amendment Number One to the 2013 Waterbury-Water Town Intermunicipal Water Agreement. Item number eight is on consent to approve, subject to the Board of Education's acceptance at the regular meeting of April 26, 2018, a state and federally funded grant contract in the amount of $700 between the Department of Economic and Community Development and Rotella School. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion approved. The consent calendar is read.
Second. Made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Just for clarification, you'll notice items six and eight, because the Board of Education has now gone to meeting, a regular meeting only once a month instead of every two weeks, these got a little bit behind, so they actually came to us before they were approved at the regular meeting. We will try to work that schedule out going forward. Previously, they met every two weeks, so normally, these things got approved before they came to us, but there's really no reason not to go ahead and prove it this evening, at least contingent on those. With that, are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve the consent calendar is read, a no vote would be to disapprove, but all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries, the consent calendar is approved. With respect to standing committees, the Chair would recognize Alderman Hadley as Chair of the Finance Committee.
Mr. President, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $29,173.33, plus $11,303.13.
Motion having been made by Alderman Martinez-McCarthy and seconded by Alderman Kula. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries and the refunds are approved. With that, we're out of business. I would just note, I've been asked to just let people know that on Thursday, the 3rd of May, from 6 to 8 p.m. at the Brooklyn Bakery, will be a meet your Aldermen for the, or ask your Aldermen for the fourth Aldermanic District. So that's gonna be Thursday, May 3, 6 to 8, at the Brooklyn Baking Company. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Just as a reminder, we have the first meeting Monday with the department head, 6:30 here, and then the second meeting with the department heads will be on May 15, also at 6:30 here. Have a great week.